You are all set, sir.
Great. Good evening and welcome to the Town Council meeting of October 11th, 2022. I would ask that we please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask that we take a moment of silence to reflect on all that's going on in the world, both favorable and unfavorable. Thank you. In accordance with master under law, tonight's meeting is being both audio and video recorded. And at this time, I would ask if anyone in the audience is recording, please say your name and address. Okay, seeing none, jump right into public comments. Jeanie, do we have anyone signed up?
No one has signed up.
And Don, is there anyone on Zoom with their hand raised?
No, not for comments, no.
Not for comments, perfect. Council comments. This time I would ask, does the council have any issues, anything that they would like to comment on? Okay, moving right along. Town managers report. Mary, do you have one for us?
Yes, sir, I do. Good evening, councilors, everyone else who's interested or watching, Kathy. You know that we did hire a new building commissioner. He started town last Wednesday. His name is David Gardner. He came in and spent the first couple of hours in HR and then we had a department heads meeting. So that lasted for the next few hours. And so I don't think he saw his office until one o'clock that day, but he seems very happy to be here. He's got great experience. I outlined some of it in the, in my report to you. He has his planning and zoning experience in his own community, so I think he'll be a real asset to the town in that regard as well. Also, during the last couple of weeks, the police chief and I and Mr. Christensen, as well as the chief in Hadley interviewed candidates for the position of police lieutenant. And it was a very difficult decision. Both candidates were quite well qualified and interviewed well and scored well on the assessment test, but in summary, we appointed lieutenant, as Lieutenant Sergeant Steve Manning. So we're hopeful that we're in the process of negotiating contract with him. And it'll be a transition, you know, it's a, it's kind of a big deal. Steve's the first lieutenant in the town's history. And I think he takes that burden and that responsibility quite seriously and will work closely with Chief Williams to try to implement the policies and procedures and the mission and goals of the police department going forward. So we're happy that Steve's in that position. Other personnel matters, the Veteran Service Office remains vacant. We've had an awfully hard time attracting candidates. We did interview three or four different people over the last several months. And on last Thursday, I think it was, we interviewed Chris LaZott again, who had initially interviewed for the first position back a year or so ago. And today we met yet again with Chris to start contract negotiations with him. So we think he'll be a very good choice for that post. He was very highly regarded after his first interview last year. We couldn't, we didn't, the district didn't think it could afford him at the time. Now we basically don't have a choice but to afford him. These, the only other viable candidate we, we interviewed wanted a starting salary 20,000 more than what we're going to agree to pay Chris. So the budgetary aspects of that will have to be addressed in the future. The district does have some reserves that we will use, at least in the short term, for those salary and benefit considerations. But we're hopeful that Chris can start around the first of November. So our three towns will be serviced again in person and a lot of community outreach and veterans' contact will resume. Representative Ash's office through the, in the person of Robin Frichette was here. I met with her and Erin Kobler probably two or three weeks ago. They're going to try to secure some funding for a van for the COA. If you look out the window and see those tri-trolley, 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 that's tough to say. I still can't say it. One's a 2011, one's a 13, and one's a 2019. And they, I'm told that the COA budget for repairs is already in excess in the first quarter of fiscal '23 than what it was for all of '22. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done on those and a new vehicle, if funded by the Commonwealth, would, would be a blessing for the, for the Council on Aging. On fiscal matters, the town's property values have been certified and accepted by the Commonwealth. That's that every five-year analysis that each municipality has to go through. So we're quite pleased about that. Not only because of the certification, but also because it's essentially one of the first steps before Steve's office can prepare the Schedule A with Diane, our assessor, and get our tax rate set for early November. And Steve, I think, has some additional comments to make in his report on that. We also had a very interesting kickoff meeting on the Heritage Park redesign. That was last Monday. We met with the designers, the architects from Ty &amp; Bond, as well as the Berkshire Design Group. And they've marked off all the wetlands. And now they'll be going into the next phase of bidding out those projects, but not until next year. We still have to get our park grant funding established. And we want to take a close look at exactly what we're spending on that project. There may be options to either reduce or eliminate certain aspects of the original concept. I don't want to get ahead of myself or give you information that hasn't been thoroughly vetted yet, but there's been some discussion about the possibility of being able to put some fields at Brown Farm in it to supplement the recreation department's need. So that's all kind of in the works and being looked at through Bailey Mitchell's efforts. And we're just trying to maximize the availability of playing fields since the recreation director is always indicated that she's in desperate need of places to put our kids. And we don't really want to have to pay to rent facilities elsewhere. So we're trying to work on that problem. Tomorrow, we have our second session with the town's fire department and their union negotiations. We had a meeting in late September. These things take a lot of time. The contracts themselves are lengthy. There's a lot of issues that are under discussion and they all warrant careful consideration and analysis. So I, I'm not certain what to expect from tomorrow's session, but it'll be the next give and take. And then we have another session scheduled, I think, for November 3rd. And hopefully we'll come to a, an agreement shortly after that date. The high school building project is front and center and it was a topic of much discussion at our department heads meeting. The school committee, as you know, had a very informative meeting here. I think it was the 21st of September, thereabouts, a public meeting at which the architects described the various options that the school building committee is contemplating. They're down to four different options. I think it was pretty well received that what they did was they put up poster boards around the auditorium area and gave the audience members an opportunity to place little stickies on the board that reflected what they liked or did not like about a particular option. We met, the school building committee met subsequent to that. And I got the distinct impression from the superintendent that he was happy. And I think the landscape architects were also pleased with the responses that they got from the audience. So we know that there's a great deal of work left to be done in the sense of explaining these options. The school building committee has to make a final choice by February of '23, which sounds like it's a long time away, but as we all know, it really isn't. And it's just such a, such an important topic for the town as a whole and the cost factors and what you get for the money that we're going to spend, obviously is subject of much consideration. But that, that particular public forum, I thought, was very well-run and very helpful to anybody who was in attendance or may have watched it after the fact. Our health department continues to conduct flu clinics and vaccination clinics. They had a couple here last week, one to drive by in front of this building. And then the following day, they had one at the fire department. I got notice today from Tammy Spencer that there will be additional clinics, I think, at the library and, and at the Council on Aging. Thank you, Marilyn. See, it's not in my report because you just told me that about those dates today, but they'll be posted and, and we're hopeful that people will take advantage of, of that opportunity and convenience. We were notified that our funding for electric vehicle charging stations was approved by the DEP. Those units will be installed in front of the library and they have to be, the work has to be done by the spring of '23. Also, we received notice that we've, that our grant application to FEMA for assistance with our hazard mitigation plan has been awarded in the amount of 20,000. That is a 36-month preparation time. On Westcom, our district emergency communications board meeting this coming Friday, the hot topic there continues to be radios and radio service and maintenance. The respective police and fire chiefs have indicated that they've been a bit unhappy with some of the maintenance schedules. The vendor that the district hired is housed in Arizona. And I think we would all like to get a vendor with a more local presence just to make those service calls easier. And lastly, the First Oktoberfest at Brown Farm is scheduled for this coming Saturday. We just approved the, the permit today, by the way, based on some concerns that needed to be addressed regarding traffic and parking and crossing of Hampden Road. So I think that's good to go and we hope it'll be a very successful event. And so, as I said earlier, information on basically everything that's going on in town, at least from the municipal side of things, was discussed at the department heads meeting. Everyone was there and all 18 department heads were able to contribute and inform their colleagues of everything else that's going on, not only their department, but how it interacts with other departments. So I personally continue to be extremely gratified by their collegiality and cooperation. We, we had a kind of a long discussion, particularly with respect to the school building project, that so much of town resources is intertwined with that project, from IT to HR to certainly DPW, to the, to their, to the clerk's assistants or the school department's assistants and the police department with Election Day use of the schools and so forth. So it's a real blending of everyone's talents and skills. And I think the residents of the community can and should be extremely proud of the service they get from their department heads. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mary regarding the report? Okay, we will jump right into approval of minutes.
I have a motion.
I would like to move to approve September 13, 2022, open session minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Having motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Or none? Actually, we can take a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Okay, communications, correspondence, and announcements. So I do have a couple. At our last meeting, we had Mr. Rich come in and talk to us. And I just wanted to give a quick update. I've reached out to our town's attorney, who's looking into, to see if there's any options that he may have. And he should be getting back to me this week. He said there was things going on and as quickly as he could, he'd reach out to me. So I'm just waiting on correspondence from him. And then I will then reach out to Mr. Rich just to let him know that we did follow up with exactly what we said we would. Under announcements, Marilyn, I'm going to ask, pick your brain. If I remember, our planning in, our planning department is having a meeting tomorrow night on overlay district, is it?
It's, isn't it Wednesday?
Tomorrow's Wednesday, right?
No, no, what's the?
Is it the following Wednesday?
No, I think it's.
I saw, I saw something come across.
Tomorrow night, 6:00 to 7:30, Burslyn Park.
Okay.
It's to, it's an open meeting to discuss the overlay mixed district for the town.
Possibility.
Possibility.
Exactly. I did see that come across. I think it's something that the public should be aware of, that they have an opportunity to talk to our planning department and see if we can get some input into it, what we like and what we don't like.
Okay.
We're a little early for our public hearing.
Make a motion to come out of order.
That would be wonderful if you would.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to jump by item eight under public hearing. This public hearing is scheduled for 6:30 and move to orders of the day, 9A, under licensing matters.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 9A licensing matters. Number one is approval of a kennel license for K-9 and pets dog training LLC. Do you have a motion?
That's Kathy.
Kathy?
I move to approve a kennel license for K-9 and pets dog training LLC, 576 North Main Street pursuant to special permit case SP 2022-3.
Second? Okay, have an emotion made and seconded. Do we have any discussion? So the kennel licenses, is this the first time or second time we've issued one? With regards, we had an incident, we changed our bylaw to require them.
I think this is the first time since you changed it.
And we made sure that a special permit was issued specifically for it. It doesn't allow any overnight boarding. People think of a kennel usually as you leave your dog for a week or whatever. That's not what this is. So everything's in order. Any other question? Having none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Line two, approval of a change of manager for AMG Retail, DBA Atlantis Fresh Market. Mike?
I'll motion to approve a change of manager from AMG Retail, one DBA Atlantic Fish Market located at 227 Shaker Road for a new manager, Karen Dietrich.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? I think it's straightforward. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes. Number three, approval of a one-day liquor license for brew practitioners for the Brown Farm Oktoberfest.
I move to approve a liquor license for brew practitioners for the Brown Farm Oktoberfest, 64 Hampden Road on October 15, 2022, from 12 to 4 p.m.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion, that motion passes. Approval of a one-day liquor license for White Lion Brewing Company for a 5K event.
I move to approve a one-day liquor license for White Lion Brewing Company for a 5K run event for St. Mark's Episcopal Church, 1 Porter Road, October 15, 2022, from 10:30 a.m. to 2 p.m.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. President, I do have one question.
Sure.
My motion to come out of order was pertaining to licensing matters only. I would like to add a second motion to continue on with financial matters.
I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to come out of order. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, we'll continue on. Steve, do we have a financial report?
We do. Good evening, councilors. We are, for our meeting type, the financial report is kind of continuation of other things that we've done. The FY '22 year-end process is going on. It's, it seems like it goes on until the beginning of the next year-end process, but it's moving towards its completion. Outside Otters, Scamling Associates have everything they need right now. They're waiting on one report from retirement. And they, they held off doing some stuff until the September 30th passed to take care of deficits, see what money we received. So they should be issuing something shortly. As soon as we can, we will, we have most of the stuff entered for the free cash. We just need to confirm it with there, make sure there's no adjustments that we weren't aware of. And then we'll, we'll file it and hopefully no questions from the state. And then we'll have certification of free cash as soon as possible. Tax rate to Mary's report, Diane notified me too that she, they have, their values were completed and approved. We're counting right now, is in the process of finishing up to recap information so we can submit that to the state also and hopefully no questions with that and we'll have a tax rate. But it's, so far it's going along pretty well. The new items coming up is budget time and it's always fun and everybody loves me this time of year. The, where we started planning it out, including your packet, was a tentative timeline. Some have actual dates on it and some don't because the ones that don't need meetings to kind of go through and set the meeting that we put an actual date. Just for clarification, the April 1st, the May 1st were for the charter. The May 30th was just the last Tuesday of May. So that's why we picked that date. They're obviously open to change as warranted. And we currently, we're going, we're going to start meeting with the department heads to go through the new process of entering the budget directly into munis. We're creating a how-to and then we're going to sit with them and go through it with them to make sure that it's convenient and easier for everyone, hopefully it will be. The other item we have, a couple other items we have on the report, bills of prior year. Fire department has a couple. They told $210. They basically, as I said in the report, vendor says and did mail them on time. They received them in September, on September 20th. And they'll be paid out of the FY '23 operating budget. DPW has one for about $1,000 that just, it wasn't encumbered. They missed it and it wasn't encumbered at year end. And the appropriation will also come from the '23 budget. The other one, the recreation, has a few bills that told about 2,300. They were frankly missed and during a reconciliation process that Recreation Department has, they found these bills and we just need to get them paid. The last item in the bills of prior year is more informational. July, we received a bill from Eversource for excessively high gas. About 17,000, I think it was. It was a large amount. And so the DPW saw this and said, this doesn't make sense. The thermes, and I'm not good on the technical, but the heating units, like 4,000, they had, but only it was at 54,000. It's something outrageous. So they're working with Eversource right now to clean this up and get the accurate number, but that may be coming down the line. So I just want to give everybody a heads up on that. And finally, on a good news, the Recreation Department received a gift of a scoreboard for Leahy Field that they, that's being donated. The current one is out of date and in need of repair. And the donor is a local business that's providing it and including the disposal of the old scoreboard. So, and that's all, all that there is to know.
Questions for Steve?
Okay, I guess we can move on to motions then. B1A, approval of bills of a prior year totaling 3,615.98. Do I have a motion?
I move to motion to approve bills from a prior year totaling $3,615.98 as presented.
Second the motion.
Great, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Awesome. And under B, the approval of anonymous donation of a fair play baseball scoreboard.
I move to approve the anonymous donation of a fair play baseball scoreboard, including installation for Leahy Field for Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I think it's wonderful. We appreciate the donation, whoever it is. I would ask for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four minutes.
Send my motion again to cover one more subject matter under Old Business, classified under C1. Second it again.
Hearing no discussion. All those in favor? You say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. We're going to jump right into the old business and the C1, which is a second vote to adopt municipal lighting plant. So if we remember what this is, is our fiber optics. It gives us the ability to actually go forwards and look at it, review it. But we have to create this municipal light plant in order to do it. We're not actually creating it tonight. What we had to do was take a vote in the last fiscal year and this fiscal year. And then it goes to a ballot question for the voters before anything goes forward. So this is just another cog in it.
I'm just going to jump in, so.
Great, Don.
Yes, the, I guess the goal would be to, if you vote, the second vote tonight to approve it, the next step would be, and I don't know if you saw this or not, it's not on the agenda because free cash isn't certified, but the next step would be to undertake the feasibility study.
Right.
And so we would come to the council looking for funding for that study. In order, there's no point putting it on the ballot in May if,
If it's not.
If the fees, if it's not feasible. So whenever free cash gets certified, sometime shortly thereafter, we would be back to put in that funding request for the feasibility study. And the goal would be to have that done and completed. And that would give us a picture of then to be able to sort of market the idea, put it on the ballot.
Right.
And go from there. But so just to clarify what that process was.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would be looking for a motion from Kathy in regards to this.
Yes, sir. I move that the town council authorize the town manager to take all necessary and appropriate action to establish and to maintain in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 164 of the general laws and in accordance with the rules, regulations, and orders of the Department of Public Utilities and the Department of Telecommunications. and the Department of Telecommunications and Cable. A municipal lighting plant for all purposes allowable under the laws of the Commonwealth. Including without limitation, the operation of a telecommunications system and any related services or to take any other action relative thereto.
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion passes.
We're fifteen seconds short of six.
That's pretty close. Okay, so the reason for the public hearing is to approve a change of officers, directors, LLC managers and change of ownership interest for Pride Operating LLC. DBA Pride at thirteen North Main Street. The council members present tonight, from my left is Connor O'Shea, Marilyn Richards, myself, Ralph Page, Michael Kane, Matthew Boucher, Anna Jones, and on Zoom is Kathy Hill. The clerk, I would ask to read the legal notice.
Notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws that Pride Operating LLC, DBA Pride at thirteen North Main Street has applied for a change of officers, directors, LLC managers and change of ownership interest. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two at six thirty P M via Zoom webinar. Please see the link below to join the webinar for the council, Jeanne R. Franklin.
Thank you. So I am opening the public hearing at this time. I would ask the applicant to state a name and address and the reasons and the rationales for the proposed transfer.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the town council. My name is Tom Miller from McDermott Colton Miller in Boston, twenty-eight State Street, to be exact. I, we're here on behalf of the licensee. I'm joined by, in my office with, by Steve Miller, one of the partners in our firm. I'm also joined by, in person, I believe with you, attorney Jim Channing, who's in house, in-house counsel for the licensee. And also on Zoom is attorney Maury Bricks, who is general counsel for GPM Investments. We're here tonight on behalf of Pride Operating and their application to change the ownership and change officers as directors. This proposal tonight is to change Pride Operating, which is currently owned by Pride Holdings. And you know, in, in its structure, it's, it's owned by Pride Holdings. And the, which is owned by Pride parent. We're applying today to transfer that ownership interest in Pride Holdings to GPM Investments. GPM is a wholly owned subsidiary of Arco, which is a publicly traded company. While we're here tonight before you for these two applications or these two changes. There will be no changes in the day-to-day operations of licensee. The store manager is not changing, the manager of record is not changing. Both Jim Channing, who is with you tonight, and Marsha Medina, who's the LLC manager, have been with Pride for many years. They have stayed with Pride through other transfers and they're gonna continue on with the company throughout this trend, this change. A- as I said, the customers will see no change in the day-to-day operations. GPM Investments is a experienced operator. They hold over two thousand licenses in multiple jurisdictions throughout the, the country. They understand the responsibility of holding these type of licenses and they look forward to working in this new market. The application for the change of offices and directors simply reflects the change in the beneficial interest from Pride Parent to GPM Investments. As I've said a couple of times now and I'll say again, this application is simply to transfer the beneficial interest in the licensee. You, the council and the customers will see no change in the day-to-day operations of that licensing. We want to thank you guys for your time in hearing us tonight and we look forward to answering any questions you may have.
So I have a question right off at the top. LLC manager, are they changing or are the LLC managers staying the same?
The LLC manager of the license, the licensee is not changing.
Okay. And the only reason I ask, I'm gonna say to Jeannie is it's a approval of change of officers, directors, LLC managers and change of ownership on the agenda.
Yeah, that's, that's the title of the application. It, it covers any type of corporate formation.
Just wanted to be certain that we're not changing the manager. So at this time, I would open it up for public input. We've heard from the applicant. Is there anyone here or on Zoom that would like to speak in favor or against this? So I don't believe there's anyone here in our room. Don, is there anyone on? So I will bring this back to the town council at this time. Are there any questions, comments, concerns?
You're pretty comfortable.
I think it's pretty straightforward. So having closed a public input portion, having no discussion, I guess I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing first.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, then I think we would entertain a motion for approval.
I motion to approve change of officers, directors, LLC managers and change of ownership interest for Pride Operating LLC, doing business as Pride, thirteen North Main Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, you are all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hey. Under new business, we have what action items for next meeting? I will be bringing forwards, we had discussed previously, a couple bylaws that we had talked about with regards to creating a subcommittee to look at elected officials and boards salaries and stuff. So I will be asking that the council look at a proposed bylaw that I'll be putting together. Is there any, anything else? Jeannie, did we already said anything for next meeting?
I have the tax classification hearing for Diane Bishop for the assessors.
Yep.
November meeting. And fuel efficiency policy. I'm not sure if there's more to review before that comes before the council again.
So I asked for that to be put off only because I'm waiting for Chief Williams to give me an update on the vehicles and what his thoughts are on availability and, and what we can and can't purchase under that plan.
And Senator Lesser couldn't make it tonight. He's coming to the November meeting.
Right.
And I have a comment. Since Senator Lesser is coming, if we have any questions, we should maybe put some thought to that ahead of time. Because generally we sit here and it's like, oh my gosh, what do we want to know? So if we could think about and if, is there anything going on that we'd like some more, you know, information on?
Absolutely.
I have one question. Seeing that we approved the MLP this evening. Wondering what the timeline might be for Don to put together the feasibility study.
Once it's financed, you mean?
Honestly, it don't pop to the top of my head. I'm not, I'm not sure what the timeframe is. It, it's a while. I mean, it would be depending on, once that's approved, we have to then
Put everything in high gear?
Put everything in high gear.
Probably looking at twenty.
Sure what high gear means in terms of, you know, the vendor and I don't, I don't know what the timeline is, but the goal would be to get it on the, on the ballot for the May election. So hopefully maybe sometime in twenty twenty-three prior to that you'll be coming back together, back in front of us with a feasibility study so that we can vote on that.
Well, the first thing he's gonna, the first thing that'll happen is
Soon as free cash is certified and
Not to put you on the spot, Steve.
Twenty-five to thirty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Estimated.
Yeah, and I believe we had already looked at one that Wilberham had done.
Correct.
Which was very in-depth and
Correct. So same process.
Exactly. I, I'm excited for it going forwards. Like I said, hopefully, hopefully we can keep the wheels moving on it.
Two of the high points for those of you that, I sat in on a couple of meetings and just to be very brief. To bring fiber in to every household down the day, down the road would be a big improvement over the cable running. It will, I can't even comment on how much faster the fiber would run. And the next big variable would be, we're not tied to a monopoly. We, it would, it's, we'll be able to, be able to choose our, an ISP provider rather than being, being told this is your provider. So that option and the speed of this would be great. And we already have fiber in town. It's already running many of our cameras down the north and the town and in different places. So it's really the timeframe that would take to down all the streets and to every home in Eastside Valley. So that's for sure.
I just want to mention that I should have the verbiage for the ballot probably by April first at the latest. And I don't know if you can educate the voters either prior to that. To let them know about the ballot question vote.
I definitely think we need to do some educational aspects and all of it. And like I said, that may be
Some, part of that is I think within the feasibility study proposal.
Right.
Not, again, I, I don't have those details right now, but but yes.
Yeah.
Language.
It's exciting, like I said, and the possibility is exciting to look at. So Connor, I know you were involved. Any, any thoughts for it?
I mean, it would be great to at least see the feasibility study as we move that forward to at least investigate what's doable and not. How it could work out, but I mean, just the general idea and prospect of it is definitely, it would be amazing if it comes to fruition.
I think the feasibility study, if I remember right, also gives you a rough idea of what the cost would be. If I remember reading through Wilberham's and gives you different options for for how to afford it, whether it's bonding, whether it's betterment, there's all different options. Oh, I think feasibility studies, the, the next most important thing after approving money to do it.
And it would help with some of the different options to tell you where you can build it out if you do it all at once, if you do it in phases or there's a whole bunch of other types of models that'll investigate.
Great. This time I'd ask if there's any other comments from the counselors. Okay, hearing none. I would, I would motion to move into executive session to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property regarding seventy Maple Street to return to open session for the purpose of adjournment.
I'll second that.
This is executive session, so I have to do a roll call vote. Kathy, I'm gonna start with you.
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
This time we will move into executive session. Okay, we are back in open session. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Anyone want to stay?
Thank you.
Okay, this meeting is over. Thank you very much. Don, thank you.